Twenty, I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, just before we start, I want to give my gratitude to all of the people who've been trying to stay on top of what is going to help make sure we're all safe from the coronavirus, which people are worried about. It's not been a problem yet here. Thank Dr. Conti, Mr. Larkin, all of the custodians, and every staff person, teachers and everybody who's being conscious and aware. Mr. Kuna got, was it 50 cases of disinfectant wipes in this week? And there's another order on back order. Everyone is doing their best to stay on top of the information. Any information that Dr. Conti has is shared, and we're very appreciative of all of that. I'm very appreciative that at this point, there has not been a problem in the Burlington Schools and in Burlington that I know of. So if we all keep using good hygiene and following, you know, instructions and, you know, staying away from large groupings as we can, you know, that's where will help us to, you know, mitigate as much as we can any problems. I know that there were some very, very special events that got canceled today. I don't, if you haven't heard on your phone yet, a message from Dr. Conti. The big events are the townwide strings and, what was the other townwide?
Madam Chair, we have the townwide orchestra and the townwide band concerts that are coming up.
Band.
And again, we're hoping those are postponements, not cancellations. And then we have some, I think with the governor's state of emergency, domestic field trips. He had already essentially canceled all international field trips or international trips. He extended that to domestic trips this afternoon at his press conference. And we said we would be making building-based field trips decisions on a case-by-case basis. We had some other events that brought large groups of adults into the schools that we canceled, and those were back to school. The parent conferences, and we have our elementary principals here tonight. The reason on my message I said restructure is because I think the communication between parents and teachers takes place in many different ways in today's world. And I think if parents need to communicate with their respective schools, their principals, their teachers, that can, again, that can take place on the telephone, over email, over a lot of the tools that we have available. So this isn't about, I think, limiting the communication with home. It's just about rethinking it and restructuring it for this, for this time. As you all know, the, the virus update, the virus doesn't seem to have a significant impact on children. I'm defining children as 18 years of age or younger. I think they can be carriers of it, but it doesn't seem to affect them. Sixty or seventy or already have some sort of respiratory or some sort of other, other condition. This is about mitigating the spread in the community. So I believe all of our students are safe. But this is about the broader community. I do just want to take a minute to thank you. Thank a lot of the school people. The Board of Health has been great. Susan Luminaello has been available. We speak every day. We spoke over the weekend. The challenge with this is there's no clear protocols for making these, making decisions. So whether we have people in self-quarantine, whether there's someone, one or two people removed, what's the definition of, what was the term, Patrick? Social distancing? Close contact, social distancing. I think these are all new terms that we're coming to, coming to grips with. And without universal testing, we don't really know the, the size of the, the problem yet. And again, I think there are lots of different opinions, whether this is an overreaction or underreaction. But to be quite honest, the, the black and white issue here that occurred this afternoon is the governor declared a state of emergency. So once he did that, there were some decisions that we, we had to make. And we're going to make those decisions probably over cautiously when it comes to a, a school environment. So.
And I didn't want to be the one to make the announcement, but we didn't mention that the Disney band trip had to be canceled.
Again, we're going to try to postpone that as well.
Postpone, maybe, okay, good.
So, we're not, as you can imagine, there's lots of schools scheduled. There's lots of postponements. I'm not exactly sure what's going to happen. And I know my announcement didn't have enough detail for people who are involved. And so we're going to be following up with the, with the event leader. We'll be following up with their respective constituencies about more detail. I think if I were to mention the detail on every postponement, the message would have been 45 minutes long. So there will be more communication. I do want to direct people to the website, burlingtonpublicschools.org. And Patrick has been almost posting daily information that we're getting from the Department of Public Health or the Board of Health or other information that we have. And even more recently today, we had our, what is it? High school anatomy class. Julia Carey's kids put together a pamphlet of factual information on just the coronavirus itself as a virus. I guess they were studying viruses. So we're going to put that up on the, on the website as well. And like I said, the situation is changing daily or, and as things change, we will communicate as best we can. And, and we're trying to also work collaboratively with our neighboring districts because obviously town boundaries, town boundaries or school districts really mean nothing to the virus either. So we're trying to figure, figure this out as we go. If it seems like this is all new, it's because it's all new. And I think I just appreciate people's flexibility. And there's lots of things to go around, but we are doing a very good job keeping the buildings clean and disinfected. And again, a lot of this is going to come down to good flu preventive measures. That's covering our mouths when we cough or sneeze and making sure we wash our hands frequently. And I know there are some, some limitations on that in some of our buildings with availability of sinks. But I also know teachers are working really hard to make sure that kids are frequently washing their hands. So with that, again.
Yes, and Mr. Larkin?
So I just wanted to add one thing because it helped me with a family member that was having anxiety. Was talking to a child away at college. And I know we have people, we're all concerned, obviously, about the health and well-being of our kids. So thanks to the Arlington Public Schools folks for really sharing a lot of the information. I know they've been going through a lot over there with some people that have developed symptoms, a student and a parent and so forth. So. They sent this out and they got this terminology or the description of it from the Department of Public Health. And it's what is, what is a close contact? So according to DPH, the Department of Public Health, a close contact is a person that has been within six feet of a confirmed case for longer than 15 minutes at one time or in direct contact with infectious secretions while the case was likely to be infectious. A person is likely to be infectious from when they begin exhibiting symptoms up until at least 24 hours after they are symptom-free. So my daughter got a hug from somebody that just came back from overseas who was with somebody that developed symptoms. But this person has no symptoms. So the point I said, I read her this, and I'm like, was the, does the person have symptoms? No. So I'm like, just relax. There's nothing to worry about. So I know, honestly, we do have, like as Dr. Conti said, if you connect a couple of dots, we may have people in the district who live with somebody that is self-quarantining. Self-quarantining means they've been asked to do so because that person was in close contact with someone that later developed symptoms, the keep term being later. So just be careful. I have a colleague, if I could just read one more brief thing, a colleague who's been quarantined himself. And he said, "One other issue is what I will call quarantine bullying." This is where people feel the need or right to directly accost or indirectly challenge those living with a quarantined family member or partner on how they should not be out working at the store, et cetera. I have had to address this several times over the past two days, and I am constantly returning to how viruses are spread and the purpose of the self-quarantine. So this is not a Burlington person or somebody connect, but this is, like, I get how anxiety can do this to people. I encourage families or staff members to contact us in central office or their school nurse. And they will, and we go directly to the Board of Health if there's a question we can't answer. If they can't answer it, they go to the Department of Public Health at the state level. So again, if people have questions or concerns, we want to hear them. But please, the families that are living with somebody in self-quarantine have enough anxiety themselves. They don't need somebody else adding to that. So that's just a caution. So thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the agenda now. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for February.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye. That's five, zero, zero. Thank you. Next is the approval of the warrant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
So, and the chair votes aye. So that's three, zero, two. And is there anyone who's here tonight to, for public participation on an item that is not listed on the agenda? Yes, there is. Okay. Come on up.
Hi, Diana Marcus, computer science teacher at the middle school. And actually, I'm coming up on a comment that was made at the last meeting regarding the need for filtered water in our schools. The comment was specific to the high school at the time, but I wanted to make sure that the committee was aware. I work at the middle school. There is only one Brita or I think they're called EZ H2O filtered water dispensers. There's only one in the entire middle school, and it's right by the gym. So for me, to go down and get water with my water bottle, it's a good three or four minutes to get down there and then fill it up and come back. Something I can't do during passing time. So I would like, if it's all possible, for the school committee to consider doing an inventory of the schools to see what the opportunities are for teachers and students to be able to have someplace to refill their water bottle. Because my, my other opportunity would be to use the bubbler that the students, where you have to tip it and try to, and I'm going to be honest with you, in a time when we're trying to be careful about germs, something that very often mouths end up on is not probably the, the ideal place. So if at all possible, if you could consider the possibility of doing an inventory and making it so that water is available to those who bring water bottles in so that we can alleviate having overflowing recycling bins filled with disposable water bottles.
Thank you for that. I do want to add that later tonight, we'll be discussing the school system's 10-year capital needs plan. And there is intention to be adding more water bottle fill, refillers and things. So maybe we can talk about that later. Is there something brief you wanted to say now? Or, okay.
Thank you, Diana. I did just want to comment to the board and anyone watching. The bubblers at the middle school are filtered. The question that came about is that there's only one bottle fill. Down by the gyms, a bottle fill. So yes, there is a discussion later on about warrant article request for water bubbler, bottle fill additions and replacements.
Great, thank you. When I was based here at the high school, it was great. I'd love to see that everywhere.
Okay, great. Mrs. Monaco.
Diana, I just read an article about how with the coronavirus scare, that people really should rethink using water bottles at this time. And people who do use them should make sure they wash them, like, frequently. Goes right through the dishwasher.
Okay, good.
And I'd like to think beyond the coronavirus.
Not specific to you, but right now, at this point in time, they're saying be careful with water bottles.
Well, that would explain when I went to Shaw's to get another five gallon that we use in my room in order to refill our water bottles because we can't make it to the other one, why there wasn't a single one left at Shaw's.
Okay, great. All right, anyone else have a comment that's not on the agenda, public participation? Okay. Our student representative, Bridget Conceason, is here tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi. I was just at the National Honor Society induction for the new members, and that started at 6:30. And we were just there welcoming parents. And this induction was honoring the students who have just been accepted into the society as new members. And as a student council, we were planning the senior citizens dance, but we moved it to Sunday, May 3rd because of the coronavirus, and we didn't want high school students and senior citizens because and tomorrow we have wellness day in the high school. So all the students have signed up for three different sessions throughout the day. And each class, so the seniors, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen have a period for an assembly as a class. And for the Burlington wrestling team this weekend, Cam and Zach Sota both won the New England championship.
That's awesome.
So.
You were supposed to lead with that.
Yeah, I forgot. I ended, the big ending.
Okay, thank you. I was going to mention it later. I, I also was fortunate to attend the beginning of the National Honor Society induction ceremony tonight. And it's just, we are so proud of these students. It's, you know, the people here, it's our job to try to make an excellent, have an excellent education for every student in Burlington. And we do the best we can. All the staff do. And, but then the students are the ones who put that, they have to be there. It's their character, their motivation, their hard work, you know, their academics. It's a combination, and we really congratulate all of them and their families. All right. Are there any subcommittee reports tonight? Yes, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, just very briefly, Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank the Ways and Means Committee. Last week, we had a subcommittee meeting with Ways and Means. And we spent a fair amount of time going through their questions. And I think the administration did a good job, hopefully, responding to most of them. There were some open items that we were going to do some research on and let us know if there's any further information that you need from us. But we're, it's an ongoing process. We're not going to meet this week, I understand, but we'll be meeting and probably the week after. Yeah, the week after. So that's my brief report, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Murphy?
No, nothing.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Any other subcommittee reports? Anyone from Ways and Means want to make a comment now, or should we wait till the budget conversation? Y'all set? Any, excuse me, Ways and Means Subcommittee, did you want to add anything here or just later in the budget conversation? Okay, thank you. All right. So announcements, let's see. I think I made my two announcements. Are there any, and we heard about the wrestling championship, champions. Congratulations.
I'm not sure we heard quite enough.
Okay, well, tell us more, Dr. Conti.
No, just what a significant accomplishment to be New England champ to begin with, but to have two brothers do it on the same night. And the, what was great is that each brother won a different state tournament. So one of the brothers was the all-state champ, and the other brother was the Division II state champ. But they weren't ever co-champs. So I'm sure it was a difficult thing because there was always one brother celebrating and one brother disappointed until New England's. And so then they both celebrated. And Cam's match came down in the last three seconds. So it was just an amazing, it was an amazing match. He was down a point, and then scored a takedown to win it in the last three seconds. So just again, amazing weekend. They worked really hard. And it is, it's a significant accomplishment. So I just, I think they, they represent our town really well. So congratulations to Cam and Zach.
Yes. Any other champions since we last met? Okay, not, not that people here know about, but congratulations to all the students and teams as well. So. All right. The next item on the agenda is the school building project needs, which is an ongoing topic. And I think unless somebody has something else, I'm going to ask that we just roll that into our later discussion. We'll be talking tonight about the Architectural Services RFQ, and we'll be talking about warrant article project lists and the 10-year capital plan. So unless there's something else people wanted to discuss separately,
That's a good idea.
just roll it right into that. And I'd like to know if it's the, the will of the body to move the, the new business for elementary schools, planning for success and draft budgets to be moved forward tonight to this part of the meeting. Would that be okay?
I'm in favor of that, Madam Chair.
All right. So with that, I'd like to invite our amazing elementary principals up to talk with us tonight. And the first topic is the planning for success. For people who are watching, planning for success is something that the whole district has a plan. It used to be called the District Improvement Plan. And each building has a plan that's part of that. It's, it's, you know, how are they in their buildings going to implement these goals, these objectives, these strategies? And what kinds of outcomes are we looking for? So we're having a first reading tonight of the elementary planning for success plan. And so you folks are on. So who's first? What, maybe you could introduce yourselves as you speak so that people who are watching will know.
Good evening. I'm Nicole McDonald. I'm the principal at Francis Wyman Elementary. And thank you to the committee, as always, for your time, your effort, and your continued support of all of my colleagues and all of the elementary schools. So thank you for having us here tonight. We'd like to share our new revised three-year plan for success. So this is our newest plan. And that last picture, David. Gets a highlight Francis Wyman. Just a couple of highlights from each of our schools. The students here are showing off their SOAR coupons. So part of our PBIS, Positive Behavior System, is the students receive coupons for doing amazing things as they're always doing, showing self-control, respect, outstanding effort, acts of kindness. And then those get redeemed for lots of, of amazing things. So students are proud to earn them. They get to spin the Wheel of Wyman. And just like Vanna, we, we reveal some kind of, of puzzle message, which is a positive message for the students and some form of celebration for our entire school. So that's what they're holding up there. And then our Science Center, we do amazing things just with collaborating with all of our district staff and support teams. Wendy from the Science Center is there, sharing her fabulous. As part of a science literature-integrated activity. So just a couple of side highlights for us. But we wanted to focus on our main objectives with our new plan. Our new plan for success is primarily learning, equity, and culture and relationships. So we've really narrowed down to three major topics that we want to focus on. A million things happening, but these three areas being our primary focus.
John Lyons, principal at Pine Glen Elementary School. And let's do their slides here. And we have me and our guidance counselor, Alyssa Kendall. And every week, we announce our hoots of the week. Our mascot is an owl. And we look for those students that demonstrated the qualities we look for and our PBIS system. They come down, get a pencil, get their picture on the Instagram. And the other right-hand corner, you have Michelle Mills, who's one of our first grade teachers. And there she's doing a Keys to Literacy lesson. And in the bottom there, you have Mrs. Salvador, our reading specialist and myself. And she had brought me in to celebrate some students having some great success with reading. And it was just a delight to share in their success. Some of the things we're looking at in our first of the three you saw up there was learning. And just in learning, one of the big priorities we're looking at is instruction. And what we're looking for is a rigorous curriculum while making learning an enjoyable and pleasurable experience. Another piece we're looking to is inclusion practices. And our inclusion practice is working for academic, social, emotional, and psychological supports for students to be successful. In addition, the other initiative we're looking at is our pre-K to 12 curriculum development. And looking at our practices and programs for all students to see if there's adjustments or realignments we need to make to our Tier One and Tier Two curriculum. Along that line, we're also looking at computer science. And what we're looking to do is to work with Central Office to plan number five for computer science for all elementary students. And in social, emotional learning, one of the things we've really seen is that our social, emotional learning needs to be supported through the integration of social emotional learning instruction throughout the day and specific periods. And really, if I think of over the years, we've really seen what a crucial piece social, emotional learning is to all our students. And the other final component is portrait of a graduate. And we've been really fortunate to play a part of this and really seeing and what we want to see a graduate of Burlington look like. And in the past, I think, going back years and years, we would always think of academics. But now what we're really looking for is a variety of traits, be critical thinking, being an active member of the community, having empathy, being able to do higher-order thinking skills. So we're enjoying that process of being part of that. And I believe that's being shared by Mr. Larkin across the district with different organizations. Some of our learning highlights that we've kind of capitalized on are our Keys to Literacy. And we're very excited this year that kindergarten and first grade started training in Keys to Literacy. And at this point now, kindergarten through 12th grade are all been trained in Keys to Literacy. And what that's really doing is providing comprehension strategies and also a great vehicle in which to organize thoughts for written expression. And when you think of it, having that continuity from K through 12 will just be fantastic. Our win time is what I need. And we're exploring this with some grades during our intervention extension blocks. And what we've really seen is seeing it as a time where we give students that might need more intervention or more enrichment. Some of the things we've done is there's been groups that have worked on vocabulary, math fluency, geometry, Latin roots. Another thing is there's a group right now in fourth grade that are building a business and marketing it. And they're just having a blast with it, enjoying it. Another piece is we've looked at our ST math and envision alignment. So in looking at our envision math program, seeing where ST math could complement envision in different parts across the grades. And also, we're looking at technology integration throughout the curriculum, and particularly science with the next generation science adoption. One of the things we saw was students are using their iPads to record data. Another thing that was really exciting was we had digital science notebooks within the iPads, which were terrific. And there have been task assignments for science that have also been done via the iPads. And if you didn't see it, the augmented reality sandbox that was created was just astounding to see students interact with sand and see different contours in the earth. And it was one of those things, I remember in 1983, seeing Return of the Jedi when the Death Star comes out on the screen. And wow, you're seeing it in an elementary school. And it was just amazing. So thank you for your support to have this level of technology and these services and these interventions and a schedule that we can provide really quality instruction for all the students of Burlington.
Hi, I'm Deb Dressler, principal at Memorial School. So I'll start off, again, you'll see a theme with kind of creating a culture and value systems in our schools. So on the right, you'll see students each week in my building receive Starbucks awards. And so every Wednesday, I have lunch with a student from each grade level, and they bring a friend in addition to some other kind of classroom activities that go on. So I look forward to Wednesday as my favorite day at school. And then on the right, I take it a little bit further, and I bought superhero capes for teachers. And so each week, teachers are either Superwoman, Batman, or I forget what the third one is. And so there's four capes each week. They go out to four teachers. And then the teachers give it to the next four teachers. So it's not driven by me. It's driven by teachers. And so it's, last year I did Care Bears Teacher Kindness. And this year I did superhero capes. It's amazing what little gestures like that do for a building. So teachers very proudly gallivant down the hallways in their capes. They do not take them off. Onto a little bit more serious topic. Our, my initiative that I'm going to speak about is equity. So obviously, the district is, is looking into constantly kind of reviewing, what are students seeing? Are the books that are in their hands reflective of the students that are in this building? Is there kind of equity around kind of access to things? And how do we have staff explore professional development around that area as well? Again, those, the equity audit is a district-wide initiative, looking at that across the pre-K to 12 district. And obviously, the inclusive practices and the curriculum alignment is an opportunity to look through using the equity lens. So some of the equity highlights that we wanted to talk about. So some of the equity highlights that we wanted to talk about was Safe Schools Training. Some schools have had people come into Safe Schools. It's a terrific DESI outlet for kind of highlighting and trainings around gender identity and gender orientations. We've had some professional development at the building level. Just yesterday, we had it at the district level for our first through eighth-grade staff. They're terrific people. They'll kind of provide whatever you need and really adapt to the groups that they're in front of. The Equity Bias Checklist is also another effort to kind of look through that lens. So what do we have? At Memorial, we had a staff meeting plowing through bookrooms. Bookrooms are connected to guided reading. We've got a tremendous resource in our bookrooms. So I had teachers just kind of go through books that some have seen very recently and some have not seen a light a day in a while and kind of go through using the bias checklist. Well, what do we want kids to see? Is this outdated? Is this not representative? Is this offensive? So we kind of culled through our bookroom, had the opportunity of using the librarian who sees things. It was actually quite a nice opportunity to see the librarian has the gift of just looking at literature for literature's sake. You know, is it enjoyable? Is this a good read? And then our reading specialists were looking at it through, what can students learn from these texts? So does it have a purpose? And then teachers use the whole diversity checklist, kind of thinking about, do we have literature that kind of represents everybody in the building? So that was a nice opportunity. The librarians have also done that work. So we're seeing just a diverse kind of representation, not only in literature, but in our instruction as well. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was the BHS, students that came to visit the elementary schools. This was something that I did a couple of years ago, had a lot of success with it. The maturity level of the students at Burlington High School is really truly remarkable. And I often say at the elementary level, kids can teach the grown-ups an awful lot. And that's true at the high school level as well. So they had an opportunity to come to, they'll be coming to my building in April, but they came to the other three buildings and had an opportunity to talk to a small group of staff members around kind of what was their experience and what could we do better? How could we kind of see things in a way that was more inclusive?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is David Rosenblatt. I'm the principal at Fox Hill. As you can see from the pictures, there's a common thread across all four schools. I think one of the things that I'm most proud about our school, and I think in all of our elementary schools, is the way we celebrate kids and the way we celebrate their accomplishments. And so on the left-hand side is a picture of myself with our Be the One winners for that week. The Be the One is, it symbolizes our school values of respect, responsibility, safety, and kindness. In each week, similar to the other schools, we choose one winner. And here on the left-hand side is that week's winners, which everyone gets a certificate. Everyone gets recognized over the loudspeaker at school and then has lunch with me that week. And then on the right side is one of our classroom teachers from fourth grade. That's David Daly, after one of our whole-school assemblies. So what I wanted to talk a little bit about is culture and relationships. And some of our initiatives for this upcoming plan are compassion, happiness, service, and wellness. And overall, a lot of things that we talked about was really the focus on, how can we make this school experience most successful for both students and for the adults working in our building? And those were really the words that we came up with that most connected to that. So in this area, one thing that we really wanted to highlight was social-emotional learning. And last year, when we came before the committee, one big request that I had was for a second guidance counselor. And I didn't get the chance at the time, but I'd like to thank you all for providing me with that because it has been a huge, huge asset to my building. So having two guidance counselors has allowed a lot of in-class lessons, has allowed a lot more individual support to students, a lot more lunch groups, a lot more individual counseling. So it's been able to reach kids that previously hadn't been reached. So it's been a huge, huge asset to our building. Both our guidance counselor and school psychologists in all the buildings support the classroom teachers and the students, and they do a tremendous job. In terms of professional development, all staff has received, has had the opportunity to receive responsive classroom. And I feel like at this point, a large percentage of teachers in all the buildings have done it. We've provided professional development with trauma-informed instruction. We actually just had our PD yesterday focused on that. And also, our PBIS systems, which we all talked a little bit about. And also, we've used the DESA assessment, which is a social-emotional assessment. There's a variety of different categories where teachers fill out this screener, and it will flag students in various areas if they're having some crisis within that area. So as a school, we've looked at the data, we've looked at the results, and found different interventions that we're able to provide for those students.
So this slide, the goal is to just synthesize our areas of focus. And there's many layers to our days at the elementary school. So these are our primary focus areas, SEL, social-emotional learning, really focusing on trauma-informed instruction, as we said. More and more students coming with greater needs to school. So really working on training teachers to manage students and to help support students with these greater needs. Curriculum is always a priority. Reviewing, aligning our current mass frameworks with what we're doing instructionally. Review and align current intervention practices for RTI, Response to Intervention. So again, wanting to take a closer look at are the interventions we're providing, meeting the needs of all of our students. Equity, again, Deb Dressler spoke to that in terms of such a diverse student population, pre-K all the way through high school. And we're just working at the ground level to help support those students in whatever way that we can. And finally, safety, safe learning environments throughout our buildings. And we did want to speak to our collaboration with the Burlington Police Department as well and with the town and the Warren article to get radios that help secure a higher level of safety for all of us in our buildings as well. So we appreciate working closely with the police department as well. So thank you for that.
Okay. All right. Do you want to add something, Dr. Conti?
I will.
All right. Are there questions or comments tonight from the committee? No. Yes, okay, yes.
Again, I'm very pleased to have seen how this has grown and how this has grown collaboratively with the four elementary schools. There's such as the Wynn and different programs that get tweaked for the individual schools because each school is unique and individual in their own ways, but still maintaining the Burlington philosophy and bringing together an overall arching theme. So I'm very impressed with this. I'm very happy to also see establishing routine check-ins with the staff regarding job satisfaction. We look at the kids all the time and check in with them, check in with them. So that was something that caught my eye because I hadn't seen that before. Maybe it's been there, I just missed over it. But I think if it's, you know, like they say, happy wife, happy home, happy mom, happy home. You know, your employees are coming in happy and, you know, feel that you can't be happy every day. But if you feel you have the ability to just chalk things out or be able to express, you know, this isn't working, or how can we go about that? I think that also says a lot for the culture, too. So I'm very impressed with this. And thank you for, everybody, just principals on down, who have worked to put this document together. So thank you.
On behalf of all the elementary principals, I'd like to thank you for your service on the school committee. The insight that you bring to being an educator has really helped kind of synthesize some of the information that we present to people that don't read in education as well. So thank you.
Are there other questions or comments on the Plan for Success? Mr. Murphy?
No questions. Nice job with the presentation. I thought it was well put together. I just thank you for your efforts. We're lucky to have a good group of leaders at the elementary level. It's obviously a very important area in the school department. Get the kids up and going and give them a good foundation, and you guys do a great job. So thank you.
Just a quick comment. I'm going to save my questions for later on when we start talking about your budget. But I like the way you simplified the, I like the way you simplified the plan. And your presentation was very clear and concise. And it shows that you're all focused in on improvement and student achievement. And I appreciate your hard work.
Mrs. Monica?
I like all the efforts to make people comfortable, the teaching staff and the kids. And I'm sure that the capes, you know, the kids love them just as much as the teachers do.
They wait for the teachers to, they screen once their teacher's name gets announced.
And I especially like, there seems to be an emphasis on everyone being kind to everyone, which I think we really need to instill in kids at a young age. And hopefully, they'll continue it as they grow older. Thank you.
I, you know, I also want to thank you for the report, for your work. And I think, I'm not sure, but I think even in the five years I've been on the committee, there's been more of an alignment among the elementary schools. And I think that's very encouraging because I feel like you all have such amazing strengths. And so you're able to benefit from each other and what's going on in the other buildings. And also, then, it helps us have equity across the district and bring all the important ideas to everybody. So I really appreciate that. In terms of the plan, I really do like that in a couple of places, your outcomes that you're looking for have to do with reviewing and realigning and not just saying, okay, we got our RTI system, we're all set. No, we have an RTI system, and it needs to be reviewed all the time. We have new SEL strategies we need to review. We need to look at those things. And I really appreciate that you don't just say, okay, we did that, and now we'll do something. You know, because I think that's, otherwise, it doesn't happen, it doesn't improve, and we don't learn from. I guess, education is a lot about reflection. And we, you know, the opportunities you give our staff to be professionally, to develop professionally, I think is important and to reflect. And I think that models also that we are reflecting on our practice and on our instruction. And how do we then reach all these goals that we have for every child, as we've talked about? I was going to say something about the super capes, too, because I thought that was pretty cool. I have to, I don't know that I'll ever get to use it, but that's great.
We can get you on the list.
Okay, all right. And so going forward, just with your, it is a three-year plan, so we don't expect things to be done, you know? But maybe next year, you could tell us some of the things that you feel maybe there's some that are well on their way, and you could give us some of those examples perhaps next year. And also, I'm really thrilled that there's a lot of discussion about equity and cultural training, proficiency training. And I know that Dr. Conti has arranged for all the administrators to do professional development regarding anti-bias and cultural proficiency. And I'm waiting to hear what the date is. So I know you all have different schedules, but I want to encourage everybody to be as flexible as possible so that that will happen this year. It's really important to me that that happens this year. I think it is for you, too, but I wanted to say that as well. So thank you. And Dr. Conti, did you have comments?
No, again, I, working with such talented people is, makes, again, makes the job easy and makes us all look good. So you guys do a phenomenal job. I think that the increased complexity of working across buildings is something I think this committee recognizes. If you imagine you had four high schools and trying to convince three other people to work with Mr. Sullivan would be really hard. So I just think the modeling of collaboration, I think, is something that I try to emulate. It's not easy, and you all make it look very easy. So thank you for that. We always say the work of schools is done in classrooms. And I think that you have hired, developed, inherited just outstanding teachers in your classrooms. I think they work really hard. I think the, as I always say, I think sometimes the elementary environment can be misjudged because people think, because the content might be a little simpler, that the teaching is simpler, and it's just the opposite, where the teaching is really complex. And the kids are just growing in complexity. And I know you guys are hard at work sort of addressing those differences. And again, I think the, I see in the, coming from the National Honor Society celebration today, knowing that, remembering those kids when they were in your buildings, I sort of see that foundation throughout the kids and throughout the district. So I think, I agree with Mrs. Monaco. You know, kids aren't born at 15. So I think the poise, grace, kindness that we see from some of our high school kids, the accomplishments of some of our high school kids certainly grow from their families. Again, I don't want to discount that at all, but I think you all play an incredible role in that as well. So again, just thank you very much. We don't say it enough, so thank you.
So that was the first reading. So at our next meeting, we'll have a second reading. If there are any questions at the next meeting, we'll be able to answer them. Anyone else, okay. So if you don't have any further comments on that, then we'll move on to the draft budgets for the elementary schools. And if someone could remind us what page number that's on, that would be appreciated by me and probably other people.
I'm going to try to do this and probably not do a very good job, but I'll do my best. So I guess we'll start with Fox Hill. That is on page nine, is that correct? Yes? All right, starting off the right page number. David, you're basically 0% non-salary items, is that correct? So again, thank you for that. I just want to remind the committee, we probably have done, tried to do zero or pretty close to zero the last couple of years. We might be able to get away with that for one or two years, but we're not going to be able to continue doing that. So again, we discussed where we have to get through this year, but just, please don't just assume we're going to see a zero in the non-salary items moving forward. So I was then going to move to, again, the supplies are on page 11. Principals' equipment, going to try to get to salaries. So David, you're asking for a couple of positions, is that right? So would you mind going into those now, and I'll try to track down where they are?
Sure.
I think it starts on page five, no, four. Okay.
The one position that I'm most focused on for next year, like I said, similar to last year when I had asked for the second guidance counselor. A need that we've seen increasingly come up is the need for a math specialist. So we currently have one reading specialist. Over the last few years, our population has crept up and up. We're at about 450 students this year. Currently, we have 32 students in math intervention. And we do have our district math coach, Carrie Fortunato. She comes once a week to Fox Hill, and she's tremendous. But at this point, we need someone that is at Fox Hill every day, both to support the kids in intervention and also to support teachers. Support teachers with ST Math, support them with Envisions, support them with modifying the curriculum for different student needs. And also, during the math specialist was in co-teaching with teachers. And I think that's something that, in our previous plan, that we had strived for, a lot of collaboration, a lot of co-teaching. And having that math specialist would be a huge asset for us. So that's really the main position that I'm asking for. There are, I also had requested a special education assistant. Once again, our numbers are going up in terms of students, and with that, our IEP numbers are also going up. And our special education staff has started to get a little bit worn thin as we get more and more students added to their caseload. And having that assistant would really help them to provide their individual specialty support in reading and math so that the assistant could then provide in-class support. So those were the two requests that I had had.
Again, just to remind the committee that when we built Memorial and redistricted, we left some of Fox Hill, we left Fox Hill with a lower enrollment because we were projecting, we were because we were projecting we were going to have growth in that enrollment area. We've realized that over the eight years, I think it's been. And Fox Hill has now, has a larger enrollment than Memorial, I think by design. That was the school committee's design, and I think our classes are still balancing. So I think that was the appropriate thing. But as we talk about equity for kids, I think we also have to look at equity of staffing. So again, Memorial has two reading specialists, two guidance counselors, and a math specialist, is that correct? And again, we've created equity in the guidance area. David, you said that's been a big help.
Huge help, yes.
We need to look both at reading and mathematics.
Yes.
Fox Hill is still down with enrollment, just to Ways and Means, enrollment isn't the only driver. We look at need as well. And we can make a data-framed argument, I know that's important, to Ways and Means, for the need for the math specialist. So it's not just because Memorial has an equal number, it's because of the needs of the kids that we're trying to meet. So I could see, I can see where that is. And the Fox Hill has been very patient in this. I think the school committee has seen these requests in the past. And what I also want to commend, David, Mr. Rosenblatt about, is that, and Mr. Nelson, I think I'm going to preempt your question, I'm sorry. But you didn't see an assistant principal on here, and I think he easily could have added an assistant principal. But I think he's prioritizing positions that will directly serve children. And I think, but that need hasn't gone away, hasn't gone away either. So through the chair, would it make sense for questions about Fox Hill first, and then we can move on to each school? So again, at a zero percent, I'm not sure there should be huge questions about sort of the supplies and materials, but if people want to ask, I'm sure we can answer.
All right. So are there questions for Mr. Rosenblatt? Yes, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you for joining us, David. Yeah, that was going to be my question, so Eric stole that question from me. On page four of the budget, we've got, one, two, three, five potential additions to your staff. And I like the way we lay this out, because it gives the school committee an opportunity to plan ahead and to prioritize. And of course, I think you've already done that. I think you've said that if you could only get one, you'd want the math specialist. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
And if you could get two, would the special education instructional assistant be number two on your list? Or would you prefer, or the, there's, number three is a speech assistant? Talking about data, as Eric was saying, tell me about those two positions.
Sure. So currently, our speech assistant is only part-time. So she's at Fox Hill three days a week, and then she is at Francis Wyman two days a week. And as I had said in the request for the special education assistant, our numbers are going up in terms of, you know, just general overall numbers, but also the number of needs for IEPs. And we're seeing that the three days a week has, isn't enough anymore, that we need someone there every day. Just for our, both the speech assistant and our speech pathologist to be able to see more kids and just open up more time for both of them.
Sure. Particularly with that issue, kids need more instruction, more frequent instruction, obviously, at an early age. Could you also talk a little bit, now this might get into John's area, but number five, I believe talks about, is it five? The art teacher, yeah, that's under Mr. Ratkovich. He says, "One additional art teacher will be needed if the school adopts the specials rotation that Pine Glen has piloted and is going well." Are we talking about doing a new rotation in the near future?
We're talking about it, but we won't be able to.
Is it because of the staffing issues that we won't be able to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just think, I think it's a great idea, but I'm not sure we should spend a whole lot of time on it when I don't think the reality this year is going to be, unless, again, David, you said that was your top priority, but it's, but I'm not getting
For now, that is the top priority, yes.
One other question, how do you evaluate all those teachers by yourself? The same way Deb does?
Yes, it can be tiring, but it's an important thing to do. Because, and I think we all agree, we, you know, part of our jobs are developing our staff and supporting them and giving them feedback. So I think it's a really important part of the job. And, you know, at times, there are some things that need to be sacrificed, but it's something that I'm really committed to.
Well, thanks for your dedication and your hard work. I appreciate it.
Other questions for Mr. Rosenblatt? Thank you for all that thoughtful prioritizing. Okay, so the next one.
One last thing, again, Mr. Nelson, you're going to close with, your other annual question is, what else do you need? Or is there anything else?
No, there's enough needs there.
There's enough needs, you're all right? All right, so that's good, so we'll go from there. Francis Wyman, I'm going to go to page 16, I'm just going in order. So again, Nicole, I, sort of the non-salaried stuff I see came in at zero percent. Again, thank you very much. I'm going to say the same things over and over again. We can't continue on that trend perpetually, but I think everyone is trying to do their best, so thank you. So that was on page 16. I'm going to flip back now to page four. And you have a, it looks like a nurse and an art teacher, or a part of an art teacher at Francis Wyman, is that, is that correct?
Correct.
And again, just to remind the committee, the Francis Wyman has never had fewer than, at least, not two art teachers, but one plus, so 1.4 FTE. Is that, I just want to make sure. And then we had a retirement, and we didn't backfill the part-time art position. And so again, there's real inequity between the art schedules and some of the buildings. And we may not need a full-time art teacher at Francis Wyman, but we are going to need a part of an art teacher, if we can find someone, just to make the existing schedule work. So I don't want to steal your thunder, but I'm saying I think that's what we discussed. And so I think that's a real, that's a legitimate need, and I think that's more of a restoration than it is a new position. And again, it doesn't necessarily have to be a full-time art teacher, but we sort of wanted to put the worst-case scenario in there. And then Ms. Conley had talked to you all about the nursing needs in terms of the building. And Francis Wyman is our largest elementary school. We have district programs based there. We also have a lab program based there. We also have our after-school program based there. We have our Sprouts daycare program based there. And so there are lots of kids in that building, and it utilized at least 12 hours a day. So
It's a busy place.
It is, it's a busy place.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. McDonald? No? Thank you again for that. And now, we can
Memorial, again, the pattern continues. So Deb, thank you. Please don't expect to see zeros next year, we just won't be able to do it. And then if I go to Memorial, you'll art teacher, I think the art teacher was tied to a potential scheduling change. And again, I don't think we're going to pursue that scheduling change. So I don't think we need to spend a whole lot of time. The Francis Wyman art teacher, I just want to make the distinction, is not due to the scheduling change, that's just due to the existing schedule. So that's going to be a different ask and a different need. And then the special educator is a, is that just for caseload, Deb? I'm just trying to think.
Yeah, so I'm requesting a special educator to support the inclusionary practices that I have at Memorial School. So when I first came to Memorial School, there was a lot of terrific support for kids. It happened to be in a learning center model, which is where students come out to receive the supports that they, that are identified through, you know, the IEP process. In the fourth grade, I'm fortunate to have a special educator embedded into the grade level. So that completely changes the scenario around kind of, well, equity across teaching, to be honest with you. So special educators are really becoming grade-level team members. So they understand the grade-level content, and they're modifying the curriculum, which is really the highest level of how we want all students to have access to curriculum and be supported in the classroom with a special educator who understands exactly what the curriculum is and how to modify that curriculum so they have access to it. So I am fortunate, I know that is a big ask. I understand if it's not granted, but I'd be foolish not to push forward. Because I've changed the culture at Memorial School to really be, I have four sections. I have a fifth member to that grade level now, who's at every meeting that grade levels go to, who's working at creating lessons that are specifically tied to the frameworks, in addition to some of the sub-separate skills that are identified through a disability. So it's my pursuit to continue that. And I'd like to, I can see it kind of coming down, I'm currently in like fourth and fifth grade. I'd like to see it happen in the third grade level.
Are there questions? Yes, Mr. Nelson?
It's just more a comment than a question. I think that if we're going to have a successful inclusion model, we need to have special education teachers in the classrooms. It's not going to work.
I agree.
So I would certainly think this is a reasonable request.
It's a shift that actually takes a fair amount of time, because it's a steep hill to climb, actually, for the special educator. And so I have special educators that are taking that climb. So I'm just going to continue to push for it's a higher-level integration. And I've seen it, it's already happening in my building, so I'm just pushing it for it to happen more, for more students.
Any other questions, comments? I want to also support the inclusion model as a former special ed teacher, who did do a lot of work in the classroom, but I was always playing catch-up.
Yes.
I would get the curriculum or the whatever to be modified at the last minute, after the, you know, rather than being part of the planning. And I think that's, you know, again, if we really believe in an inclusion model where students would receive any additional services they need in the classroom, then we need to provide that staffing as well. So I really support this request.
Thank you.
Good, all right. Yes, Dr. Conti?
No, and again, like David, Deb didn't put her assistant principal on this year, but she caseload isn't lessening, they're just picking up the slack. So just didn't make, wasn't realistic, but I just wanted certainly to inform the committee in Ways and Means that we easily could have added two assistant principals to this, to this mix. So Deb, thank you very much. Pine Glen, John, you're breaking the streak. I'm not sure how they allowed you to get away with it, but it looks like you're asking for an additional $600. You don't mind, we're not going to spend a whole lot of time on that, so we'll figure it out later, John.
We're going, we went down a section of a classroom this year. So we're going back up a section this fall.
Excellent.
And so that implication is that that is materials for that additional classroom.
That's the $600 mystery, thank you. And I'm sorry, please, those at home, I'm not making light of $600, it's very important. I'm just saying, in the grand scheme, it didn't look like the others, that's fine. John, you have a point two assistant principal, a math specialist, and a special ed teacher, so have at it.
Right now, we have two full-time special needs teachers from moderate special needs. And they're accessing, we're at six grade levels. So just if you think of the hours of the day and the number of places to be, it's a huge scheduling challenge. The other piece is, as we want to explore more inclusionary opportunities, we're really limited in the amount of inclusion we can operate with two full-time special needs teachers. Another special needs teacher would allow us more flexibility to do inclusion. And the other component is just, I can't talk too much about the individual needs of students because of confidentiality with the IEPs. But this is a position that's not a nice position or a great position. This is a position that I'm asking for because the need is I would be echoing a lot of what David had said. But really, what we're finding is with language-based math, as it's been implemented over the past couple of years, there's a huge vocabulary component. And really, having a math specialist would be a huge part of that, as well as providing interventions. Carrie Fortunato comes and helps us, where she's math coach for the district, and she does an amazing job, like David said. But really, having that math specialist would be critical. And I know, I think this is the third year we've asked for a math specialist. And it'd be great if we had a math specialist, we had one in all of the buildings. And the point two assistant principal would just be some nice thing, that'd be kind of cool. I think, I don't know if it'd be possible, but sometimes you need to be in six places at once, and it would be nice to be in five places at once, one of the days out of the week.
And John, I appreciate you putting it on there, because it kept the assistant principal conversation front and center. So I'm not sure Pine Glen would be the first place we'd add one. But I'm saying, I think it was great that the need hasn't gone away. So thank you for reminding us of that. I will say, a three-section school on a five-day rotation isn't efficient to schedule. So part of what John is reflecting on is just the, people, even if they have a small caseload, still can only be one place at one time. So I think that's why it's not necessarily an enrollment-driven need. It's probably more of a scheduling need that is driving the conflict. And the intention for math specialists, I keep looking at you, because it's been, what, five or six years, I think, since we've had math specialist, at least? Was always to have a math specialist in each building, and we have not been able to fulfill that, fulfill that need. So again, I think these requests shouldn't be surprises at this point. We've gone through them year after year, again, but we are trying. And again, I think all of your requests were right, were very well-aligned with your planning for success and the work that you're undertaking day to day. So thank you for that.
Any comments or questions? Yes, Mrs. Monaco?
Which grade is needing a new section?
Right now, we have two fifth grades, so next year we'll be going up to three fifth grades. And it'll be, we will have three sections at each grade level next year. Currently, it's three at every grade level, with the exception of fifth, that has two.
Second, I just want to emphasize that as a former math teacher, I think every school should definitely have a math specialist. Reading and math are the two basics. It's just something you need, and you don't want kids falling behind in math in second grade. So the third thing I wanted to say, and last, is that you are making it look too easy to work without assistant principals. I honestly don't know how you do it. I don't know how you evaluate, what the evaluation process that we have to use. I don't know how you do it for every member of your staff, I just don't see it. So the fact that you are evaluating all of these people, all of your teachers, and I know they're all great, but still, you have to evaluate everybody. And it's like a gigantic load of work to do that. So I want you to know that we appreciate that you're doing it, but I really think
Yeah, no, I actually really appreciate your commenting. In times when we're, we really are actually student-centered. So the bodies that we're asking for are actually a direct line to improving instruction and learning. So I agree with you. I think the process, probably the evaluation process, would be probably at a higher level if the load was divided. But right now, it feels like, you know, we have, we want to put the right person, the most qualified person, in front of kids.
I hear you. Thanks.
And I was just thinking, just, we say ST math all the time. I'm not sure the committee, is that familiar with it? It might be fun after budget season sometime in the spring. If we came back and had the committee members do maybe some ST math problems, I think it would be because the kids, when I substitute, the kids really like it. And it's an interesting, it's a, it's a non-language-based math program, and it's, it's a brain-based it's, it's a brain-based curriculum that was developed. It's really neat. I think the kids really like it and it's, I think it's a tool that we started using several years ago that has really taken off. But I think Burlington was really one of the founding members of the, of the curriculum. So it's just a really, it's a really neat thing. So we'll, we'll bring that in and I think it'd be fun.
All right. Are there further questions about any of the elementary or comments? Yes. We, Ways and Means. Yes, Mr. Eiler. Do you have some questions for us tonight?
I'm surprised you're like that.
Okay. Or anyone else from Ways and Means? Okay. Thank you again for everything you do in the district. And thank you for bringing us the, to your attention, these needs, which I'd like to say yes to everything. We'll see where that ends up, but.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, there's a question. One more question. If you don't mind finding, getting to a microphone, that'd be great. Thank you. I apologize.
I'm Beth Holvern. I have a child at Pine Glen at WACC. I just wanted to reiterate parent support for the special ed instructors people are looking for. I have a child who gets inclusion and I can't emphasize enough how valuable it's been for him. As a board member in the CPAC, we get a lot of parents asking, how do I get more inclusion for my child when they're in the sub-separate environment? And you can't do that without support. And you can't individualize their programming without support. And peers, neurotypical peers benefit greatly from inclusion as well. They're exposed to our children and our children are exposed to them, you know. It'll be a lot easier when they're adults. Just wanted to reiterate support.
Thank you for saying that so well. Appreciate it. Yes. Okay. Any further comments or questions on the elementary school budgets? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thanks again.
While we're on the budget, I just wanted to review for people that we do have a budget calendar, which we were going to get updated because we need to add a budget hearing, a public hearing. At the moment, we have our next budget hearing is, our, our next budget discussion is at our next scheduled school committee meeting on March 24th. And it will include the Marshall Simons budget, the special education budget, the Burlington Early Childhood Center budget and the capital warrant articles, although we will be talking about them some tonight as well. And we will need to have a public hearing. At the moment, we are looking at our April 14th meeting to have that budget. So we have a chance to complete the presentations on March 24th. We have a scheduled meeting, no, is it the 14th? Am I getting my dates right? Yeah. Okay, so the 14th would be the next school committee meeting after we complete the budget presentations on the March 24th. If there's an issue with deadlines and timing, we might want, need to add a meeting in there before April 14th, but we will let you know at our next meeting if that's a, a need. At the moment, the, the budget public hearing will be on Tuesday, April 14th. Okay? So the next item on the agenda, I'm gonna go back to our financial discussion under communication. And the first topic is the monthly financial update. Are we gonna get that from you, Dr. Conti, tonight?
You will. And again, probably not as much detail as you'd like, but the format should be very familiar, familiar to Ways and Means in the school committee. So if you look in that, under that agenda item, page one of the financial report are the revolving accounts. And I'm not sure there are any questions on the revolving accounts?
Okay. Any questions on the committee on the revolving accounts? Okay, Mr. Eiler? Yes.
Thank you. Didn't want you to forget me.
Yeah, thank you.
The, just one. There's the child development revolving account seems to be new. Perhaps I was discussing, I lost track of it. Did that get broken out of something else or?
It did. I think that was part of the high school account. That's the high school program. And we, we take in tuitions and the auditor said he wanted to see that out of the high school account and put into revolving account. And Nicole went over that last financial report and, and last meeting, the school committee voted to create that account. And so that's not, it's not new money. It's just money that came out of the
Rearrange.
High school student activity account.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions on the revolving accounts. Are there any questions on the monthly update for the operating budgets? What I'm noticing is that the number's still not going down very fast of what's remaining for the rest of the year. We do have March, April, May and June left to get through, but the number did not seem to go down a lot in this last month. So I was encouraged by that. Pleased to see that. Are there other comments or questions from the committee? Dr. Conti, did you, oh, yes? No. Dr. Conti, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, there's a lot of unknowns. So we still, remember our end-of-year payrolls are our largest. We have to get through the summer and I think that's been accounted for, but we also pay our, the second half of our stipends and we need to make sure that we can do that. So don't be fooled by the number. Bob will also tell you that we're spending a lot on cleaning supplies. So I think some and we have limited availability. And so we're, you're probably, probably gonna see some higher expenditures in the maintenance area than would normally expect. And we may even need to bring on some additional cleaning support or cleaning help. So again, a lot of unknowns. We might need to carry some payroll. Again, so you're gonna ask me if I'm comfortable. I, I am not. Probably wouldn't be comfortable until above June 20th. So, so again, especially in this time, the, there's a lot of unknowns.
Yes, Mr. Murph, I'm sorry. Were you done? Okay, Mr. Murphy?
Just a comment as far as that goes in terms of what happens between now and the end of the fiscal year with respect to the ongoing health issues. And circumstances and depending on how this thing breaks out and if, if there are additional costs that we incur because of that, whether it's for cleaning items or anything else, I would certainly encourage the administration to potentially look at a, a reserve fund transfer between now and then if necessary, rather than short-circuiting some other budget items that, to rob Peter to pay Paul. So I just kind of keep that in the back of your mind as you go forward. We'll see how it plays out. But if there are significant expenses incurred, I think that's kind of what the reserve fund transfer as far as unexpected expenses such as that.
Okay. Mr. Nelson?
Just a, a quick question, Eric or Bob. On page two, down the very bottom where we talk about spent and encumbered as of 2/29. We've got projected as of 2/29. We've got $20 million 206, 546. Am I, you see where I am, Bob?
Yes.
Am I correct in assuming that $20 million 206 figure includes what we anticipate to spend on stipends at the end of the year?
It, it does. But one of the challenges we're having with this is, I'm not sure all the stipends are accurately reflected in the contract. So it's really hard for us to budget completely accurately. And so we've gotten much better at it. And every year we have a meeting and we try to make sure that we have every stipend covered, but we, we always find some that, that we don't. So we're spending a lot of time this year going through our stipends and just making sure that the budgeting is more accurate than it has been. But all the stipends that we're aware of should be in that number, Mr. Nelson.
Further questions from the committee on the monthly financial updates? Any more questions from the Ways and Means committee or?
Just have to do accommodate?
Oh, right. Accommodated, yes. Go ahead.
And again, I think we are on track and we have a positive balance as of now. But again, any changes or anything like that would be reflected in it. But so far, we're, we look like we're, we have accounted for the services that we're presently delivering. If I could frame it that way.
All right. Any further questions on any of the monthly financials? All right. So the next topic is the RFQ, the request for qualifications that were put out for architectural services. Comments from the committee, but I, I would like to also ask Mr. Kuna to report and give us his recommendation. Is that agreeable to everyone, that we can start with his recommendation? Okay, thank you.
So you all have in front of you my recommendation that's written out. First, I'd like to say that we did an RFQ that was issued on February 5th. We had 28 interested candidates that did request the information from us. When it closed on February 24th, we had six vendors actually give us written proposals. I do want to thank the six vendors that provided us with proposals and I believe that all of them are qualified and met the minimum requirements of the RFQ process. Given there is some criteria for how we evaluate each candidate, also there's a, a written statement in the RFQ process that allows us to pick the top three and then request written proposals. So remember that when it comes to an RFQ, we're requesting qualifications. An RFP is when we're actually requesting prices. So because we wanted the qualifications first and we got those from the six candidates, we now have the opportunity to select the highest three, which is in the recommendation here in front of you. And then we need to request written proposal from them on what their cost would be. And we're able to negotiate with them as part of the RFQ process and the way the RFQ was written. So while you're not selecting one candidate tonight, you're allowing me, by agreeing to my recommendation, to now contact these three vendors, ask them for written proposals. And then once we get those written proposals, compare their prices against each other and of course, bring that recommendation back.
Okay. Are there comments or questions? Yes?
I guess the first question is, I assume you want to vote then tonight just to authorize the three finalists, if you will, and to give you the authority?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Madam Chair, for discussion purposes, I'll make a motion that the school committee approve the recommendation that the firms of CBI Consulting LLC, BLW Engineers and CSS Architects be the top three ranked proposers of RFQ. And we should authorize Mr. Kuna to negotiate with them as far as their pricing.
Second.
All right. Yes.
And my question is, I guess this is Bob. I know one of them's an engineering firm, one seems to be an architectural firm. I, I can't tell what CBI, if they specialize in one area or another. And this might be part of the, out of, of the pricing, but is there any benefit, in your opinion or from your standpoint, to have a primarily engineering firm who subs out architectural or primarily an architectural firm who subs out engineering? Does that play into your, your decision at all?
It will, and thank you for that. So as part of the RFQ process, one of our requirements was that they needed to be able to provide either in-house or sub-coordinating with another company to provide us with those. The negotiation process does allow us, if we wanted to, separate services, so we could have that conversation. So if we were more inclined to want to work with an engineering form, firm, and not have to call a, let me make sure I say this right. If we were more inclined to work with an engineering firm and we did not necessarily want to have to call the architect firm to then sub out and do that during the negotiation process. So the comment that you made, it is true that two of the firms listed are primarily architect firms that do sub out their engineering services. One of the firms is an engineering service company that subs out their architect services. So.
All right. And, and is that borne out in the, in, in the pricing? Might not be asking that correctly, but for instance, would, would an engineering firm, and I don't know if one component's more expensive than the other, but it seemed to me an engineering firm that could do things in-house might be less expensive to do the engineering component of things than they have to sub out the architectural firm, which will potentially be more expensive and vice versa. Is, is there one of those two subgroups that are inherently more expensive than another? So it might make sense to engineering was, was the more expensive of the two components of order to an engineering, get the in-house cost for that and have them subbing out the, the architectural end of it and vice versa? Is that?
So the way that the designer process works, the state actually has a price list and a checklist of what services are rendered. Then when we ask for the request for a proposal, what's gonna happen is, is that each proposer should give us a list of what they would charge for an architect's service, what they'll charge for an engineering service, what they'll charge for a structural engineer and so forth, all the way down the process. So we'll have an individualized list of what each one of those costs are per hour. We then get to compare that against the three people that are submitted. So let's say for example, a structural engineer in this one company is X dollars per hour and it's Y dollars over here. That's when we can have the negotiation process to say, is this something that we want to readdress or look at?
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I also, and we've, I've talked with you, Mr. Kuna, and it's possible also that we could keep, we could hire more than one firm. So we could potentially hire the engineering firm to do primarily engineering work and one of the architectural firms to do the design, more of the design and architectural work. And that's another thing that you would be looking at in the negotiations. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay. And I like, I like that idea because it does look like there are different strengths in different areas. But in the next stage of this process, you will be looking at prices as well. So that I'm, I would like to support your recommendation as well. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mrs. Monaco?
How are you doing references?
Oh, thank you.
Cold calling. So each, each proposer was required to provide at least five references. They all projects that they've done in what we're calling the low, medium and high price qualities. So then we get to look at those. Some of them may be, let's say, MSBA projects or other state-run projects. So then we can look at the references for those online as well through the MSBA process.
Do you remember the company that oversaw, they were the project managers for CSI, was it?
CMS.
CMS. Okay, for the memorial and the, and the middle school. So at least twice a year, I get requests, written requests for recommendations. They, they submit my name, probably because I was on the building committee or the chairman of this committee or whatever the reason is, but I get the requests. Is that a company that has been part of this bidding process?
That particular company did not submit any interest for the RFQ or an actual proposal to us.
Okay. And they're probably site managers anyway.
Yes.
As opposed to, yeah. Okay. So I, I just want to make sure that when we check references, we check some that maybe they don't want us to check.
As part of the RFQ process, each proposal was required to submit anything that would have disbarred any member of their firm, any illegal action taken against their firm, including a lawsuit, and also any financial troubles that may have, you know, included bankruptcy or default on a loan. So we get to include that as well too for our decision making.
Okay, thanks. I did want to add also, you gave us a nice report of what you're, why you're making the recommendation. I just wanted to review for people who don't have it in front of them, that these three vendors rated highly in four areas of evaluation and comparison. And you looked at prior similar experience and discipline, the understanding of the scope of of the scope of the work, and the proposer's financial and other ability to undertake and complete these types of assignment of projects with their assigned staff, and the qualifications and identity of the applications team, as well as the quality of the client references and past performances. So those are the criteria that we've been using to look at these bids that were, firms that had submitted proposals to us. So, is there further discussion on the motion to approve these three vendors to be furthered, to be furthered in the negotiations in this process? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, and the chair votes aye. That's five, zero, zero. Before we move on from that topic, the next step, I believe, Mr. Kuna, if I'm correct, is you'll be interviewing or meeting with these firms and asking them questions. And obviously, as, I am not an expert in this, but I wanted to know if any of the committee members would like to be part of those interviews going forward. There is some time pressure, because if, if we want to get someone on board to look at our statement of interest before April 6th, when we put in our statement of interest to the MSBA for a new elementary building, if we have someone on stat, on contract?
Contract.
Contract, we would maybe use them to review the statement of interest to be sure that if there's something they could think of to add, that would be great. So there's a bit of a time crunch, but I know you're going to go forward with it, and I wanted to know if anyone else, anyone else on the committee would be interested in participating in those interviews with the vendors with Mr. Kuna. Mr. Murphy, your comment?
I just, I'm comfortable with having Bob do that.
Okay. Mrs. Monaco?
I think if, if it turns out that there's like a tie or something, we could, we could have public interviews. But I don't think that the school committee member really should be in that.
So you don't want to be in part, involved with that?
I agree. I would defer to the administration on that piece.
All right. All set then. I would like to talk to you a little more about that process. I might be interested in hearing their conversations. So, so we will, you can go ahead with that. So that, I believe, is the end of that agenda item. And now, Mr. Kuna, I think we would like you to present the draft warrant article project list.
Yeah, let me just-
This is, let me just clarify for people who are watching, that town meeting has warrant articles, which involve sometimes bylaws, and sometimes finances, and all those things. These are warrant articles for May town meeting that involve capital projects through, for the schools. So if you want to, go ahead, Dr. Conti, with that.
No, I guess, sort of be, going to present, under communication, agenda items C and D are going to be linked together. So our ten-year capital plan and our warrant articles. I think I just wanted to recognize Bob's efforts to put all this information together. And I think this year, I'm not sure in the past, I was trying to recall, had the school committee voted on a ten-year capital plan in the past?
We discussed it periodically. I'm not sure we've ever voted it.
This year, I wanted there to be a sort of a first reading and a second reading, just to be a little bit more formal, just with the ten-year capital plan. So tonight's just going to be a first reading anyway, but want, if you're not opposed to taking that vote, I just think that may, may help us do that, but you'll sort of have a first reading. And then Bob can talk about the process for the warrant articles, but it's not just straight building needs. He does speak with all the principals. He does speak with folks like Dennis Volano, our technology integration specialist, who works with our librarians and folks. So you'll see both instructional supports that I think we need, that are large sort of one-time expenses, and some facility upgrades. So we definitely need some new schools, and we're working on that, but we also have to maintain the schools that we have for quite a few years until, until we can meet that need. So Bob, thank you for all the work.
Thank you.
And I know you have a lot of information to present to the committee, so.
Yeah. I do want to start by saying that there's two pages to the warrant article list. And I hate to be so blunt as to say, one is our wish list, and the one is kind of more of a prioritized and also recommendation list.
I'm not sure I'd frame it as a wish list. I'd say, one is, reflects our needs, and I think the, the other one reflects the limitations on the dollar amount that we've been provided. So-
Is that number been set at one-six?
I think that was communicated to us was one-six. So I think we started, again, they're all needs. I think we're deferring some of our needs to try to meet that number. So Bob with that.
And I'll thank Dr. Conti for my correction. I was not going to admit to say that it was fully a wish list. I would say if we had unlimited funds wish list, we would take all of it. But since I'm forced to prioritize that due to the funds available to us, you'll see that. Said, obviously, I can go through these one by one, which I think you deserve. So if we start off with the very first one, which is interactive technology for the early childhood center. This is an actual package, if you would like to call it that, that includes new interactive laptops and interactive displays as well, too, in the classrooms. Right now, they do have projectors, and they are included in our plan for replacement of projectors, just that the schedule does not actually see that happening for another few years. With that being said, though, it's a different technology, we believe, that would probably work better in their environment, meeting with the director, Deb Clark, and meeting with, you know, some of the teachers that are in the early childhood. So we think these interactive touch displays and sound systems are a little bit more suited to the needs of that environment. So when you look at that request, you know, it's not just a typical projector. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but are these ranked in any priority list, or are these just?
What I'm reviewing right now is not the priority list until we get to the second page. So these are just all of the ones that have been-
These are all the ones listed on the initial list, the 2.405 list?
Correct.
Okay. And then when we get to the next page, you've listed, and you pared them down, numbers-wise, but they're listed in your priority order?
Very, very close to what I would consider my priority order, talking to the department heads.
Okay.
I think, again, if you talk to the department heads, they may think their priorities are a little bit different than mine.
All right, no, that's, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at it right.
Yeah, clarification.
But yes.
Okay.
The second one on the warrant article list is the boiler repair.
At Marshall Simons?
Marshall Simons. So I think some of you are familiar with last year seeing boiler number two. Marshall Simons has three boiler systems that were replaced in 2004. Ideally, we would love it if these lasted thirty years, but we're not seeing that. Unfortunately, this is the third one, and it is failing, not failed yet, which means that we do not believe we will get the rest of this year and/or any of next year out of that. That being said, having all three of these boilers repaired and in working condition within a short period of time gives us the expectation that they will last, again, the same amount of time or more, and fail roughly around the same time in the future. So again, we're expecting somewhere in the fifteen-plus years for these to last. It's not the same that we're used to hearing of past equipment, not that they're of less quality. It's just that in general, now purchasing this type of equipment, we typically don't see those twenty- and thirty-year warranties anymore. We see closer to the ten-to-fifteen-year warranties available. So again, this is definitely something that we would need. The systems do run in a load-balancing form. So while we only do run two at a time, at any time if one was to fail and we only have two functioning ones, we would not be able to produce enough heat for the whole entire building. So we do need two functioning boilers at all times. Again, I'll keep it relatively brief, but I'll take any questions either right after it or at the end of all of them.
Okay.
For the next one, Burlington High School varsity field. Again, that is a large number at $500,000. This field, believe it or not, is ten years old. And again, people ask, how long do fields last? As much as we use them. So really, that's the number. The warranty on the field is five years, but that's really on if the paint fades or if the fiber breaks and things like that. It's not on how many, how many soccer games are played on it, how many football games are played on it, or how many times we have to go and refill the infield rubber. Please.
The replacement, just for the committee, is not a reconstruction. So it's, they don't have to do all the under stuff again. A company comes out every year and tests the, the compression on, on the field, and the field just gets hard over time. And the amount of use it gets contributes to how compressed the field is. And so they've done those compression tests, and they're saying, now at this point, they need to basically resurface. So they pull up all the underlayment, and they'll probably ray, lay new fiber and new compression material on the field. And it's, I would consider it a safety issue moving forward. And for the amount of traffic that field does see, I think ten years was a, it's a, it's an expected, and, and I think it was, it's a, it's a well-used and well-maintained field. So I don't think we're, we're shortchanging anybody. And again, it's because of this testing that Sean Hart, the athletic director, was really saying we need to, we need to recondition that field.
Madam Chair, if I could just to follow up on that. When we first put this in ten years ago, if memory serves, the manufacturer essentially told us we'd probably get about ten years out of it. So it's not happening any sooner than was represented to us when we installed it. That discussion was had very thoroughly on town meeting floor when we looked for the funding. So, you know, town meeting was aware that at the end of ten years cycle, give or take, we would have to put some more money into it. So I think this is right on schedule, and I think everybody will agree that we've got a lot of use out of that for the last ten years at all levels, not just the high school, but youth leagues and adult leagues and everything else. So it's a, I would submit it's a pretty valuable town resource right now, and it's, it's, we have a responsibility to maintain it. So I would certainly support this request.
Okay. Mrs. Russo?
Um, I have spoken with Mr. Hart about this, but do you have any backup base fund thing over the past ten years, when we've seen this with the middle school turf time, and then the turf that was put in down here at the playground, the high school? They have material now that is twenty, fifty percent cooler, and then the infill gases out much less. The materials, have you, does this cost, look at that, or, okay?
So actually, yes, if I could just comment on that. I guess I didn't really know too much about the rubber fill that was in there, and you actually learn a lot when you talk to these experts. So the new rubber does exert less gases out of it. It does also, like you said, produce less heat. But another thing I realized is that this rubber doesn't float, and that doesn't seem like necessarily a big deal. But part of the compaction is that when it rains, some of the water float, I mean, some of the rubber floats and then disperses in other parts of the field, and then the compaction happens from when the water drains, and then the students or anybody who's on the field steps all over it. So you get that compacting down again. So the new rubber that they're using doesn't do that. Kind of amazing, actually, when you just think of something so simple as, just don't make it float, and the water doesn't, doesn't change. So, but yes, it is something that we're considering as part of this.
And again, Bob, I know you're going to comment on this, but in regards to backup, you're just seeing the warrant articles now. The school committee will be getting the backup, sort of, moving forward. So you'll have it ahead of the next meeting when you have to look at this. But we didn't want to provide backup on every single warrant because we can't, we don't believe we can accomplish every warrant. So, so that's, you will be seeing those costs and some drawings and things like that that you are typically used to.
Correct. You will see that.
Mr. Nelson, did you have a comment?
Just a follow-up question, Bob. And years ago, when we did the varsity field over, we had plans for a fieldhouse out there. Is that in the ten-year plan at all, or is that just fallen by the wayside? Because I've had several people talk to me about lack of toilet facilities at the, at the football field, and elderly parents who don't really want to go into a porta-party at halftime. And we really should put that, I think, back into our plan if it's not there. I printed the plan up, but unfortunately, it came out so small, I couldn't read it. But I think we ought to think about, we've got the design for it. I think that the infrastructure is probably there. It's just a question of cost and, and funding, if I'm not mistaken. So I'd like to have a conversation about
Okay. Mrs. Russo?
I would just like to echo that. I've been there for many youth games, and they, there have been grandparents and pregnant moms have had to leave to come back. So it's definitely seen not just as a high school, but as a community-wide resource.
Okay.
Thank you. So the next one, staying on that same theme, would be the varsity track. And this is the same conversation as far as the varsity field. You will see that that actually has moved. That's something that we would consider maybe for pushing off till next year. Again, that's a maybe, but it is something that, as we were sold about ten years to it, and it does get a lot of use, and this is something where they would actually reclaim the whole entire track and put a whole new track surface on that. So this is something where the rubber actually breaks down over time. We still are getting some of that outheat, outgassing of some of the heat from it, and the absorption rate does change over time as well, to a tiny, tiny bit. So that is definitely something that we would look to replace. The next one we are looking at is music department installs and upgrades. While this does seem like very generic, I think the support, the backup support you'll see will be, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
So this actually encompasses a couple of things. So at the high school music department, this is not only in the classroom, but also for the stage as well. So this is a request for new lockers. I guess the equipment that we've used over time has actually changed. So the shape of the lockers, but also the way that the lockers are not sound-dedining now, and they're metal lockers, so they actually reflect sound. So not only would we accommodate different instruments, but these new lockers would actually help in sound absorption. Another thing is that we are in a concrete building, which is instruments. So also, we would be looking to purchase sound-dedining material and equipment to be mounted on the walls of the two music rooms at the high school. And the last part of this request would be to add a net for the staging of our auditorium. So in between the stage and the pit, this would be adding a safety net there as well, too. So again, this encompasses actually a couple of upgrades and new equipment for music classrooms and for the auditorium, stage, and pit. The next one is audio and technology replacement. It sounds confusing without the backup. In the technology budget, we do plan for replacement costs in cycles, but we also were planning for replacement costs of broken or lost or misplaced items, damaged items, and so forth. What this really is, is that when you look at, let's say, the middle school and/or Memorial, when they were built, a certain sound technology was actually used and installed in those buildings. It's hard to believe, but 2012, 2013 is when those buildings actually came online, and since then, those sound technologies have changed. So let's say the microphones that you see in this room that the teachers would wear, those systems are no longer compatible with some of the new systems, and finding replacement parts for those are getting tougher. So looking at replacing and upgrading those systems in those buildings, maybe not all in one year, but at least looking to replace those, especially as needed, so we can get ahead of it. So.
All right. Questions? Okay, go ahead.
So next is auditorium equipment and staging. This is at Marshall Simons Middle School. So at the Marshall Simons Middle School, again, which I just stated was opened and repaired as an MSBA project in 2013. Not many upgrades were actually done besides the lift in the auditorium. So that means the house lights weren't necessarily upgraded as part of the project. Any of the rigging is all original to the building. And the lighting and sound equipment, again, may have had some upgrades over time, but not relatively new. So this request, even though it's a large one, is not only just a safety concern, but also upgrades as well. So the lighting in there is really dim and oddly placed. The staging that is behind and the rigging above the actual stage is old enough that definitely needs to be at least considered to be replaced wholly, or at least upgraded. And then we also have a curtain there as well, too, that we are no longer in need of. That's a heavyweight curtain that is very old. Definitely something that we would look to not have on that stage if we don't need it. So again, well, it's a large purchase. This is definitely something that I would put high on my priority list. The next one, if there's no questions on that, would be to look at a library renovation and equipment here at the high school. This is something that you may have seen last year as well, but was dropped off our list, not because we didn't need it, just because, again, we couldn't- list, not because we didn't need it, just because, again, we couldn't make it fit on our priority list. As you know, the high school has a large library. It's a lot of open space, really tall ceilings, which is great for a large venue, but when you're really trying to have that personalized learning or trying to get into smaller groups is tough. So part of this is actually taking the entranceway area where the checkout desk is and moving that more centralized into the building, putting a new checkout desk there, which now gives the teachers a better line of sight and more availability to the students. But then also refinishing that first room right there and closing that in and making it more in line of the computer lab. So it's an enclosed conference room as well. So that's definitely something that would be a benefit to the high school. Next one is memorial playground resurface. Again, I'm going to stress, this memorial was opened in 2012, so not exactly brand-new, but the surface of the playground was done and poured in place rubber. That is similar in, let's say, to the rubber pellets that we were talking about for the varsity field, where they take that, mix that with some glue, spread that out in a color pattern and you get that rubber absorption material on the playground. It does deteriorate over time, so we actually have patches right now that are ripped up. We have patches that are peeling. And we actually have the underlayment that we've had to repair multiple times. So while this is expensive, this is definitely something that's a safety concern as well too, just because the number of patches that are there definitely could be a trip hazard for students. So.
And the irony of that too is the hard, the rubber surface is supposed to help with access for students who have trouble walking or for wheelchairs. And actually, this is becoming more of a problem just because it's deteriorated and has some holes in it. So I think one of the reasons they use the surface where, is no longer a benefit.
Along those lines, and they've apparently improved the technology on the football field material over the past ten years, is there another surface that we would look at other than this one, which doesn't apparently work, last too long or work too well?
Mr. Murphy, under even a blind squirrel finds a nut once in a while, you, you're ahead of us a little bit here, so.
I was looking here at my acta sketch.
But yes, yes, that is something. So there's actually two different surfaces that we're looking at. So the current one, obviously over ten, twelve years, has been upgraded to a newer process, so it does last a little bit longer. The one currently has about a five-year warranty, which we've outlived. Up to ten-year warranty. But believe it or not, they also do turf fields and that's ADA compliant as well too. The two playgrounds that we have here are turf. So that's something that we were considering as well for that playground.
Okay, Mrs. Monaco?
I don't see anything on here for Francis Wyman Playground.
Correct.
Correct, you don't. The reason you don't see that is that we have yet to actually have committee meetings on that. So while the committee is still in the process of being formed by the principal and assistant principal of Francis Wyman, I have been told that that is something that's in place and it actually should be going out relatively soon so we can start forming that committee, which I was told I will be part of. Also the rec department, I believe PTO members, members of the community are expected to be part of this committee. And then what we'll do is get an idea of what people expect to see over there. So while we don't have that in time to actually ask for any money now, because we don't know what we would like, once those committees are formed, we've had some meetings, I'm sure we'll be able to report back to this committee what we're expecting to see if there are changes asked for that playground.
Maybe do it next year.
Okay, yes, Mr. Nelson?
While we're talking about playgrounds, I know we were going to wait, I thought, till the end, but we're on the playground issue. It's definitely a safety issue over Memorial School. I mean, I hear complaints all the time about the condition of that field, about the playground, excuse me. But Bob, you have on your, on page one, you have a cost to do that work of a hundred, is it? Ninety, ninety. And then on page two, it magically came down to fifty. How are we going to do that?
We will explain that when we get to it, but unless you want to do it now. So in, we felt like the, the new synthetic surface would serve our purpose. So the synthetic surface that we use at the preschool, which is more of a turf-like surface, which is ADA compliant, would last longer and be more accessible for the kids and it's less expensive and has a longer warranty.
Warranty.
So, so we were talking about completely changing the, the surface.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay.
Everything I would have said, so.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't doing it in phases.
No. So you do see that ninety thousand dollars initially because to replace it with the exact material that we have, that is that quote. But if we look at the newer material, like you said, it does come down a lot, so.
Not typical, but good. All right.
Yep.
So what's next?
So the next one is bathrooms, exterior bathrooms at the Marshall Simons Middle School. Not sure how many people are actually aware, but if you were to climb the hill underneath the gym, there are two bathrooms there that are available from the exterior. One of them was, I would say, slightly condemned, taken off commission and then covered up and used more of a storage room. The other one, I don't know that it's been used in a few years. And this money would basically be to recondition both of those and make them available at least to students and staff during the daytime when they're out at the field. And then for extra activities that happen at that field at nighttime, we would have to obviously put a plan in place to figure out how we can make those accessible. So the next one is for a water bubbler replacement. This is something that Ms. Marcus brought up earlier today, so I'm glad we were able to touch base on that. Again, when we looked at this three years ago to do the water bubbler replacement, the initial idea was to filter the water bubblers that we had in place. So that does happen and we are replacing. But then what we've seen a push for is to add the additional top bottle fills on them. So if you look at some, like at the top of this hill here, as Ms. Marcus mentioned, in the, in the gymnasium of the middle school, there is a typical push-button water bubbler that you would drink from, but then there's also a bottle fill station where you would place a bottle or a cup underneath and then fill the bubbler with. So this money request would be to go around and upgrade some of those additional bubblers to the top water fill. So the next one is a camera and upgrade replacement plan. This says district because, like I mentioned to you before, we do replace some typical broken, old equipment, things like that in our normal budget. But we're coming up on two larger buildings that were, again, MSBA projects, 2011, 2012, so Memorial, Marshall Simons, where, again, the camera technology that was available then versus what is there now is not really the same. And we've also found that in some of our other buildings, adding a few more cameras would give us a little bit more visual coverage to the exterior of our buildings. So again, in the backup, you'll see that this is actually for more than, you know, a large number of cameras, but that'll be to replace typically Marshall Simons and Memorial and then add cameras to some of our other buildings.
So we're talking about security cameras?
These are security cameras on the exterior of our buildings, yeah.
Okay. Questions? No. All right, keep going.
So on the MSMS curriculum one, I'm going to have to defer that a little bit because it's not necessarily my strong suit and the understanding of it. I do understand that it is strictly or a push towards social studies curriculum and there is a push to do it in three grades at the middle school. If I'm misspoken, I apologize. I'm waiting on a little bit more backup material on that as well, but I'll provide more information as I can.
Mr. Larkin?
Yeah, I know Mrs. Purchase is at our next budget meeting, but I think my understanding was this could be broken down into thirds. I think the number there is for all three grades to get some resources for next year. And if, depending on where we're at, there's the possibility to phase it in over a longer period, but she could clarify that.
Okay. Thank you.
As you've seen in previous years, the next one is vinyl and rubber flooring replacement. In our typical budget, we do cover for this, but sometimes the amount of replacement needed is above and beyond what we would cover. So as we did last year, we asked for a warrant article to cover in some of the larger areas. So let's say in the long streets one and two here at the high school, some of the stairwells. Any stair treads there are, to realize the cost of replacing those is kind of more than you would typically think to replace a couple of, you know, square vinyl tiles somewhere else. So when those do come about, it's kind of tough to throw those into our budget for maybe a one-year request and then not have them come up for a few years. So that's why you're seeing that here. The next one is the painting materials and supplies. Same conversation as the, the previous vinyl rubber flooring, but also requests that you've seen in the past. We buy lots of gallons of paint in our normal operating budget and that does a lot of touch-up. When you have three thousand kids plus adults running around buildings between books, iPads, hands, feet, there's scratches, scuffs everywhere. And we typically budget, you know, to repaint some rooms, but a lot of touch-up paint. And again, given certain years of wear and tear and so forth, like the additional money helps us really cover those and keep our buildings looking, looking great. So the next one, this is one where you, you saw last year in the design work for the HVAC here at the high school, but in our earlier conversation tonight, where we actually have the RFQ out, and now hopefully soon we'll actually have some, some vendors on contract. We have a couple more products to be looking at. One would potentially be some MSBA projects. One would be some design here at the high school that goes above and beyond just the HVAC. And then other building projects that we have as well too, let's say in our elementary schools that we would like to look at some upgrades. So this design work primarily would probably be used here at the high school, but it doesn't nearly make sense to me to not only bring on an RFQ company just to say we have one, but I would also like to take advantage. The design phases and/or request for them to help us out in planning what the future of Burlington would look like for some of our buildings.
Again, a concrete example of that might be to design new science labs. And I'm not even sure they could do that for a hundred thousand, but it makes no sense to bring on a design firm, as Bob said, without some funding to use the design firm. So, so that's what we sort of ask. So again, to the committee, those were the priorities, again, aligned with the ten-year capital plan that we were, we were talking about. And then we don't need to go through every project. We've just been through every project, but if you could turn over, you'll see sort of how we narrowed down our choices and we can discuss which ones we, we removed. So the, the varsity field replacement and track placement, we felt we could do in two phases. They would have to be done separately anyway, so essentially the track need isn't going away, but we pushed the track to, to a future year. So that was why, why that came off. The music department install and upgrades was reduced because what we had discussed is putting more of the music operating budget, like the musical in the operating budget, and we would use the revolving account like athletics for some equipment that they needed. So I think we pulled out, or I think we kept in something like the, the net over the orchestra pit because we felt like that was a safety item. And we, doesn't mean we're not going to provide the other upgrades, but we'll probably take that out of the revolving account and you'll see that moving forward because that's what we committed to. I think the audio technology replacements, we reduced. And again, those are the sound systems that are in each classroom. They are not a nice-to-have, they are a necessity. So I'm just going to say we have to start getting on a replacement schedule there. That surprised me as much as anyone else because I thought we just bought the stuff like six months ago and it's hard to imagine it's been like eight years and I still don't have my Walkman from a while ago, so stuff changes. The middle school auditorium, again, is something that was not addressed in the renovation addition of the middle school. Remember, if we were to have built a new middle school, we would not have gotten an auditorium anyway, which is why the MSBA didn't include the funding for that. And with the original rigging, we, we have to make those changes. And even, we've held town meeting there and so I'll just look at Ways and Means. I think once in a while when we lost power or there was some issue here, we had, and if you remember, just the lights are really dim. It's just not, it's, it's just an auditorium that needs some, needs some help. And it is the Abadi Auditorium is how we should refer to that, so that is true. The playground resurface, Mr. Nelson, again, we feel like we can provide as accessible a surface that will last longer and using a different material. And again, we can certainly show that material, but we, this is the same material that we used in our preschool playgrounds that seems to be holding up well. And I see our preschoolers running out there all the time, so they are certainly putting it through its paces. The bathroom stayed. We took off the high school library. That was a hundred thousand dollars, not because it's not needed, but we didn't have the room for it. So, so that was, that was removed. We kept the exterior bathroom, we kept the water bubbler.
Flooring and the painting.
The flooring and the painting came off. So again, we, that doesn't mean we don't do any flooring and we don't do any painting. We just won't be able to do the significant amount that we've done in the past. And again, so that gets us down to the number where we're at. We had to keep the curriculum in as a placeholder just because if that's a student need, we're going to need to do that. And again, the design work, I don't think it makes sense to have a designer without some funding to use that person. And again, that was why, I'm not sure they're an exact priority list, sort of number one to the end. I think they're pretty close, as Bob said, but those were our 1.6 million dollars worth of priorities, given the, given the other list. Good idea, Miss Lanning?
Are there questions or comments?
Just a, one-sixth is what we're allotted, so this hits the target.
Yes.
Correct, okay. The vinyl rubber flooring replacement, the painting materials. The ones that we do through our regular operating budget, is that more, and I think you mentioned spot fix-ups, repairs, that type of a thing? Are these other two more inclined to be a larger project, like replacing an entire corridor or a set of stairs or something of that nature? Repaint a whole area of a building?
Exactly. So let's say a typical stairwell here at the high school costs upwards of about ten thousand dollars. So if I was to budget for one of those stairwells every year of ten thousand dollars, it'd be great, but I don't have enough stairwells to necessarily do that. So then there'd be years, right? So that's why you'll see some of these requests where we go to look and replace, you know, let's say three stairwells at a time. And then I don't ask for it for a few years. Same with the painting as well too. So let's say like this room doesn't get painted every day, it may just get touched up. So we may need to purchase one gallon over here, but then a couple gallons of a different color. But then when we have these bigger rooms that need the, the painting, and of course through the six buildings, a million square feet of property that we have here, you know, the dollars that we have are gracious and generous, but sometimes just that above and beyond helps us get through the summertime with those bigger projects to get done, painting and flooring-wise.
So it's safe to say by taking that out, we won't have any large planned replacements of vinyl flooring or repainting of large areas of the school for this year, but you can get by with that. You can still do touch-ups, you can still do repairs.
Yeah.
Because you can't do any large, large-scale replacements or?
Large-scale, no. So we would be pushing off stairwells here at the high school, definitely. I think that some of the other rubber flooring and vinyl flooring that we were looking at to do in this warrant article, we would push into our operating budget, but probably hold off to the middle or later on in the year, just to kind of. But I think, like you said, priority-wise, that there's some other things that fit higher up on the list than those particular ones.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I, oh, okay. And I, I just want to say that I, I think that the choices, I mean, we could use all of these warrants, but I think the choices you've made and the adjustments and some of them are very appropriate. And I specifically want to highlight the additional hundred thousand dollars for the design work. We had a hundred thousand dollars for design work for the HVAC at VHS. I feel very strongly that we need to do a bigger project than the HVAC at VHS. And that includes science labs, but it also will likely include if we're taking down ceilings and we're doing electric. We find rotten things and we need to replace. I feel pretty strongly that if we're going to do this project, we should do the full project. I understand it's going to be a lot of money if we do the full project, but I. But I really am encouraged to, to see in this plan that we are going to go ahead and look at additional design work. I mean, 100,000 dollars, if we do the full VHS renovation, which we haven't defined yet, but in my mind, it includes the HVAC system, all of those interior renovations that go along with tearing up the walls and everything, the science labs and other things like replacing the vinyl floors might be included in that. I, I know, I, I think I heard someone say that kind of a project could involve up to a million dollars for design. So we're just taking little bites at starting it, but I, I'm encouraged until we know where we want to go exactly. Don't need it for the, the high school, other, other parts of high school planning, then certainly there are other projects in the district that if we do have a, a firm or more than one firm on call, then we would be able to hire them to do that work so we know where we want to go, how much things are going to cost, what those projects would look like. So I'm very glad that we have again put in 100,000 dollars for design work here. And that's not to minimize the other things that I think are good, and I, I do think the focus is a lot on safety issues. So I appreciate all of your, your work that you put into this. So Mr. Eiler, you have questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, it's actually on the same topic there. I'm, and maybe I'm not understanding completely what's being done by the engineering services, but you know, obviously this amount of money is pretty minimal and, you know, in, in terms of engineering time, you know, you're, you're going to get, you know, a few months with this amount of money. So, you know, I guess the question is, is the intention that this money, so I mean, this money's not enough to do, you know, nearly all the design work that Ms. Simon was talking about. Is the intention here that this is providing guidance in, you know, the initial steps of what we might do for a building or the initial steps of what we might do for HVAC as opposed to the, doing the actual project, which this isn't enough for?
I'll do my best and then Bob will correct me. So the, the warrant article that we have approved for 100,000 dollars was written to bring, have an engineering, engineering firm create bid documents on the HVAC system that we could put out to bid. So that was sort of self-contained. We felt like we could do that for 100,000 dollars, is that, that's correct? This 100,000 dollars in no way are going to get us bid documents for... I think we need to know, we need the design firm to say, in order for us to do some renovation, design, redesign your science classrooms, it's going to cost a million and a half dollars. I just need to know that number because more than likely that would be a bonded number, not a number for capital projects. And then we would go to work with the town's financial team and go to town meeting to get, get that number. Because by switching our statement of interest to an elementary school means, again, the needs in the high school don't go away and we're going to have to take on some of that design work and some of that process that the MSBA would sort of force us to go through on our own.
So this is for project scoping is a good way to look at it?
Exactly, so that's, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm thinking. Is that enough, Mr. Eiler? Again, we'll, we'll, we'll see. But I believe there's, for us to take on the high school renovation project ourselves locally, there's going to be some significant money that's not going to be met in a capital warrant way.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions now on this draft budgets? I'm sorry, on the draft warrant articles, projects that people want to add. Ms. Marcus, would you like to come up to the microphone?
Diana Marcus, Middle School. Actually, just a, a couple of quick comments on the audio and technology replacement. I just want to say first of all, as a special education teacher for many years, I have seen what these systems do and how essential they are for our students. And so I'm glad to see that in my other role where I've seen many parts of these break down over the past seven or eight, nine years, that I'm glad to see that we're going at this in a comprehensive way, even if it takes a couple of years. I do want to make a request, however. Because these are eight or nine years old now, most of our training in how to use them appropriately was eight or nine years ago. So for folks who had training, it's been a while, and we've also had a lot of new staff come in. And I have seen that without proper training, it's not actually being used in the correct manner. People are certainly doing their absolute best, but they just haven't had an opportunity to understand the appropriate volume to use and the, the best way in which to go about calibrating these systems. So while I realize it probably wouldn't be included in the warrant, I'd like to make sure that somewhere in the operating budget, we do have the company come in and do formal training with our, with our staff so that we get the absolute most out of these, most importantly, our students get the most.
Mr. Sinasi, did you have a comment? Yes. Oh, is the green light on?
Oh, it's even greener. Adam Sinasi, I, I do have a question. A couple of years ago Burlington opted in to become a designated green community. And what that entails is us scaling back our, and it becoming more energy efficient to the tune of 20%. And I understand that over the course of the last few years, some of the other towns' facilities, including the library, the library's the next one up, they've improved their infrastructure as far as energy efficiency. Will the HVAC plan include that energy efficiency, that 20% reduction? Or is that another spending measure that's for a subsequent year?
Yes, Mr. Kuna.
So yes, the HVAC system will include a reduction in energy. That's the intention of going to more efficient equipment. Not only that, we have done... So that's helping that. What you'll see in the 10-year capital plan moving forward is, is that you'll see some reduction plans asking for capital monies to actually see more plans in place for more efficient boilers, lighting controls, things like that to help us reduce our 20%.
Okay, thank you.
That's also working with the town, with Rachel Kaplan and John Sanchez from the DBW to fit into a long-term schedule.
Excellent, thank you.
I'd like to also add that in reviewing, I didn't get through all of the bid specs, but the firms that we, we are asking Dr. Kuna to move forward with all do reference sustainability, energy efficiency, cost recovery, and lead certifications and other types of ways that we hopefully will be becoming more energy efficient, reducing our carbon footprint. And that's an important priority for me as well. So when I saw they were all looking to address those issues, I felt reassured. So the new designs, hopefully from the beginning, will be looked at with that lens as well. Other questions or comments on these draft warrant articles? So will we be voting on them at the next meeting? Is that correct? Our next meeting's on March 24th.
Ideally, yes. I'll definitely handle more questions if need be for next time, but I'd like to present, I believe these are finalized numbers, but if we have any updates in between then, I'll make the committee aware of those. Again, if there's questions, I'll, I'll handle those. But I would like to see the, the vote on the 24th, so then we can submit these to the town by the deadline on the 27th.
So the backup materials?
The backup I'll send within the next few days.
Okay. And there, it looks to me like this reduced and recommended... Are there any that are still, I support this list, but are there any that in your mind are adjustable or questionable and maybe we would want to replace something?
In mine, no. I think that there's potential for some wiggle room, like I said, in, in the curriculum one. But I also believe there's potential for that to go up. The number that I was told and the number that I've seen is that one. But given if we were to look at multiple years and so forth, it could actually raise that, which may have us look at reducing somewhere else.
So if you could, if, if we're going to hear more about the curriculum project item next time, if you could, if that ended up not requiring the full 90,000, if you could have your preferred recommendation of what we might use if there was additional money, that would be appreciated.
Yes.
I also, are there other questions or comments on the warrant articles? Before we go to the tenure plan, I also want to comment that we've talked, Dr. Conti brought up the topic of bonded issues for some of these building projects. We do have big, large building needs coming up. We are going to need to go to the town and figure out how to do that. And I don't think it's appropriate tonight, but I'd like, I'm already thinking about, do we need building committees? Do we need a town-wide committee where we meet with the town and town meeting people about the long-term debt schedule? Is there a way for us as a school committee to be part of a process that's ongoing with long-term debt? And, and I want to make sure that, again, sort of from the beginning, that we're looking at it because it is a lot of money that's going to end up being requested from the town. And, and we understand that, but we also see all the needs that we have. So I, I just want to put that out, that as we go forward, and I know I've never been on a building committee, I know many of the people here have, so I'm looking for, to you folks for, you know, recommendations and ideas about when we want to start looking at that. Mrs. Monaco?
As far as the funding goes, Mr. Murphy and I, the subcommittee with the selectmen, and we have already begun those discussions.
For the, which subcommittee is that, the debt schedule?
No, it's, it's with the selectmen and the finance team. And the conversations have already taken place. And as far as the building committee goes, once we get into a specific building project, then we are required legally to have a committee, a building committee, with certain criteria on how the committee is built.
So when would that come in?
Not until we have a project.
Okay, set up after...
Like there was a building committee for Memorial School.
That's an MSBA requirement.
Yeah, it's an MSBA requirement.
And we, I think we should think outside the box with the high school project because we're not going to be bound. We certainly will likely follow many of the same procedures as an MSBA project, but we should feel like if there's something that will benefit our town better, we should look at what we want to do in, in that. That doesn't mean having a committee sooner, but, but there may be some requirements that we are not held to. Like I think I heard that MSBA does require LED, but maybe there's a more, more sustainable plan we can use instead of LED. So I just want us to be open to what our flexibility is if we're not being restricted by rules from the MSBA while using the structure that they have, because obviously there's a lot of success in it as well. So, any other questions or comments on that? Okay, so the next... Regarding the tenure capital needs plan.
Right, so the, the point of tonight, we can certainly spend as much time as you want on it, but it was really to almost approach this like a policy, so we wanted to get that out to you as a first reading, let you spend some time with it. It'll be on the agenda next time, just, just for an approval and for us to answer some questions. I think one of the first things that when we go before capital budget, they ask for is a copy of a 10-year capital plan. So I just wanted to get it before this committee to update it and then to do a, hopefully have a vote on it so we could share that as we move forward in the process.
Yes, Mr. Murphy?
I agree, that's a good idea and we can all look it over for the next time, but something just jumped out at me, so I just wanted to ask quickly. For the high school track resurfacing turf replacement, you've got a 900,000 dollar item for 2021 and, and again in 2022. It looks like based on the numbers that we should, should hear, the whole, the whole package was going to be 900, 400 for the track and 500 for the field. So if we do the field this year through warrant articles, I assume we'll carry forward the 400 dollars till next year. But we seem to have more, we have 900 in there twice and it should be 900 overall, it seems to me. Am I reading that correctly or...
So there's, there's a couple of things in this, you know, 10-year capital plan that need to be adjusted. One is, you'll see the request that we presented tonight, but some of those may not even carry forward to next year, so we will have to do that. The other thing too is that given the prices that we get, when this was prepared or when I actually filled that in, we've seen higher estimates given on some of the upgrades that are available to us on the field, which is why we were carrying that actually high-end number. Let's say for the track resurfacing alone, there's so many things that you can do to that to bring it well above that 400,000 dollar mark. So it is possible to break it up and do, spend 1.8 million. But it would need to be updated.
And that's, just, and that's, thank you. I, with the, the request the superintendent made that we, that we treat this almost like a policy thing and we look at it and voted and all that type of thing, which I'm, I'm fine with. But I just wanted to make sure that we all understand that this is a fluid document. And just because we're voting something this year, things could change a month from now or a year from now, whatever. So it's a snapshot of what we need going forward now. Nothing's locked in anything beyond this fiscal year.
Almost thinking, Mr. Murphy, like a baseline, just sort of a starting point and...
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine with that.
We've had so many different starting points.
I just don't want somebody to say three years from now. You voted this thing back three years ago and it said 300,000, how come you need 900,000 now or whatever?
No, again... And again, Mr. Nelson, we will adjust for the second reading, we'll add in a field house because you, you made that again. I think it's meant to be a, a projection and I just think it's a, it's a document that we need to, we need to maintain, so that's all.
Yes, Mrs. Rousseau.
I just can't figure this out. The CR3, it's in each school, what does that stand for?
So that's the request that Mr. Sinasi actually brought up as part of our green town requirements with, with the DPW. So Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Kaplan actually submitted these to me to put in our 10-year plan. So while I don't know exactly what the CR3 technically means, I can get that information for you in, in a minute when I look at the document. But this would be improvements to reducing our, our carbon footprint, reducing to our, our, some of our electricity required... Buildings that were, these were actually identified in the town's audit in becoming a green community.
Thank you.
And I have a question. As I look through this during the week, I'm noticing, for example, under Marshall Simons, the boiler replacement. For last year, there was 125,000 and for this coming year, 125,000. And I'm not remembering what we had on the warrant we just discussed. 125, okay. But then it has 125 listed for 2022, so is that likely to be adjusted if we do go forward with the third boiler for the 2021 warrant articles?
So, yes.
Okay. That's, yeah, generally that's fine. So it's, it's put in because it isn't done yet. And, and if it gets done, it may not need, it could be adjusted. Again, as you were saying, Mr. Murphy, it's a snapshot in time, it's not set in stone, but it's... Are there other questions about the tenure plan, capital needs plan tonight? Do people who want to look at it have a copy of it? Could, we send that electronically, we've tried to do it in paper and it's kind of hard to do a spreadsheet in paper. And Sharon did a great job, but it's, I still need my magnifying glass. So if, if we could share with the Ways and Means Committee, yeah.
Can I just make one request? If possible, instead of sharing this one, can I share an updated one that Ms. Kosha is reviewing? That's going to have newer numbers on it? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good. Okay. So are we done with communication, Dr. Conti? The VHS Planning for Success Plan was presented at our last meeting for a first reading, and this is a second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the Burlington High School Planning for Success document? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, that's 5-0-0, thank you. All right, new business, out-of-state staff travel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like the approval for this, I believe it's going to change. Not because the need isn't there for the training because the college board requires it, but my belief is the college board will probably do some sort of mobile in-place training, but I just want to have the approval anyway. So Principal Sullivan is requesting that, let me get to the right place. I would say travel for Burlington High School French teacher Laura Feig to travel to Cincinnati for advanced placement training on June 12th to Tuesday, June 16th. So again, things may change. With that, obviously... So again, things may change. Um, with that, obviously, um, if no domestic travel is being recommended, we would make that adjustment. So it's recommended, school committee approve out-of-state travel.
Okay, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye. That's five-zero-zero. Thank you. And, um, are there any other topics that we have not gotten to yet? Okay. Well, I, I guess my, I have a question. I guess it's still on the, um, ten-year capital plan between now and the second reading, because I, again, it was a little hard for me to read it, but I would like to know where- And high school renovation project, we've talked about maybe seventy-five million dollars. It's a lot of money, but is it there on our ten-year plan? And I know some of it, I saw some of it, and if you could just head, you know, lea- tell us where on this it is, that would be helpful to me.
So if you get to the tab that says high school, not tab, but on the left-hand side, the, um, the very first-
High school design.
Burlington High School renovations. It does say with MSBA.
Yes.
Um, so obviously, I would look to remove that, um, but it shows, starting in twenty-twenty-one, um, fifteen million dollars, and it has additional fifteen million dollars for the next, um, seven years. So it actually is asking for a hundred and five thousand.
Hundred-five million.
I'm sorry, a hundred-five million, a hundred fifty-five thousand, right? And again, that's obviously well more than what we would have originally asked for, um, but I don't believe that we will have aft- all the documents ready to go, let's say, on, um, you know, July one of next year, so I don't know if- Maybe fifteen million dollars is an unrealistic number, and we have to change that. So, um, the numbers are there, and like Mr. Murphy had stated, this is a fluid document, um, depending on when those actual requests happen.
So it is included as a placeholder, and it is included in the totals-
Yes.
-that we're looking at. That's very reassuring. Thank you.
Um, in addition to that, Ms. Chair, um, there is also design fees in there. So while we're asking for a hundred thousand dollars this year, um, next year, there's a million dollars in design fees, and after that, there's additional fees as well, too. So, um, those may need to be adjusted.
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you. Any further topics from tonight's agenda? Is there anyone here with a further comment for public participation? Seeing none, um, we do have a need for executive session tonight, um, from General Law, Chapter thirty-A, Section twenty-one-A, Subsection Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, regarding the clerical employees, the BEA, and instructional assistants, um, we do have a d- need to discuss these matters, because to discuss them publicly would jeopardize the position of the body. This would also include, uh, another topic of Section twenty-one-A, Subsection Three, to discuss security strategy, and also the approval of executive minutes, uh, from two meetings, and we will reconvene in public only to adjourn the public session. Motion-
So moved. Second.
Okay, uh, Ms. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We are in executive session.